At 1:42. Pm daylight savings time. And then I would like to ask my sister, Priscilla Benali, if you can do a vocation for us?
Alright, thank you. On the part, um, beautiful thing we're making here. We're very nice and just, I think, fantastic. We can, and we look for everyone else that are here today. We're here to, um, do our voting and work right for the community. I'll be chatting with the shows to carry each other and guide them. Given the wisdom that we gave, made going in the right direction. The choices that we made, what we're gonna vote for. And I pray for everybody, the families that are here. Um, they're hoping you, if you are, they can, and you can do that.
Hey, Michael. Hello? What? I think the batteries are dying on this.
Hello?
Yeah. Okay, um, well, we'll move on to approval of the agenda. Motion?
Oh, um, okay, just had a question. Um, can I add a resolution?
Uh...
We gotta move first to the agenda.
Oh, for good.
Yeah, and then we can look at the resolution. Uh, approval of agenda, Priscilla?
With, with additional.
With the addition?
Uh huh.
Okay. This thing keeps dying on me. Okay, approval of the agenda is motion by Priscilla Benali to include resolution number thirteen. Okay? Second? Nicole? Okay? Okay, your, your resolution or your agenda is there, but we do have eleven and twelve that is added, and then thirteen will be added. Okay? Um, those are the resolutions up to ten. Um, number eleven. Let's get closer than... Eleven.
Test, 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 test.
If the batteries are... Maybe the batteries are stronger at that one.
Okay. Resolutions TBK 2023-254-011, approving and supporting the budget transfer of $278 from Fund 01-63 to 00 Office Supplies to Fund 016306 Computer Software to cover the shortfalls to date that were not anticipated. That's number eleven. Number twelve, uh, TBK 2023-254-254-012, approve and support the 2024 and 2028 School Board Aportement Plan to have more local representation and empowerment, and urge the Human Education, I'm sorry, the Health, Education, and Human Services Committee of the 25th Navajo Nation Council to pass a legislation that has local representation and empowerment. Number thirteen, approve and support the need of all Navajo Nation fairers to be wheelchair accessible and compliant with accessibility standards as outlined in the Americans with Disabilities Act, ADA, and urge the Navajo Nation Fair Committees and the Fair Host Chapters and the Human Education, Health Education, and Human Services Committee of the 25th Navajo Nation Council to pass a legislation to appropriate funds for these improvements.
So those are the three, um, resolutions that are added. Any other comments, questions, concerns? What's that? Nicole, number thirteen is that?
Um, yeah, that's the, um, approve and support the need of the fairgrounds of the Navajo Nation to be, and urge the Health, Education, and Human Services Committee of the 25th Navajo Nation Council to pass.
Okay?
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, so we have thirteen resolutions altogether. Comments? Vote? Okay, all those in favor, raise your hands.
Nine, ten, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty.
The quick?
Twenty.
Oppose? Abstain? Okay. Approval of the agenda is passed with twenty in favor, zero opposed, six abstain. We have twenty-six people signed in. Uh, about twenty-five are voters of this chapter. Chair, uh, I guess I'll go ahead and just vote with it. Giga. Alright, approval of the last regular meeting minutes from August 15, 2023. And he'll go ahead and... Wait it for you.
Question? Um, for the approval of the last regular meeting, I don't want to have to use corn. So I just wanted to know if you can just post it? Are you gonna online?
Yeah, it's already online.
Is that okay? When it's posted outside?
Yeah. Okay.
So you're making a motion to post the last meeting minutes? And I think it's already posted on the website?
Yes.
It's already posted on the website? Um, and then if you want a copy, you can get a copy from the office.
I motion to go on board. I motion to go on board.
Okay.
Because everything is in the system, so it took us a long time to get it formed. Yes.
Okay. Alright, so motion is made by Jamie. Noticed being? And then, Priscilla, are you seconding?
Yeah.
Okay. Priscilla Benali seconds the motion.
Who's that? Meeting minutes for both planning and regular.
And if you go to the chapter website, it's already posted there.
Right here. Under the, meeting minutes are posted, and the agenda and the budget are all posted under the, um, chapter website, TBK Meetings and Service, uh, Area Services. You scroll on down, you'll have the agenda. Then you go down to the meeting minutes. So this one here would be the meeting minutes, and it should pop up with the meeting minutes.
Yeah. Questions, comments, concerns? Attention. So because you said to go, move on with this. So, um, I have called for the vote. All those in favor, please raise your hands.
Twenty-one.
Oppose? Abstain? Okay, approval of the last regular meeting minutes, August 15, 2023, passes with twenty-one approval, uh, zero opposed, five abstain. Okay, we move on to presentations. We already did the, um, call cards, the presentation. So, um...
Herman Daniels' report.
And then, our council delegates' report is right there. Do you want it read to you?
Post it, please.
Post it?
A motion also. Was there anyone we could, um, like, back to you? If we can, anything that needs to be read or maybe can we just post it? Add that on? So everything will be posted?
I can.
Okay, to the approval of the agenda?
Yeah, of additions and posters are posted. Everything that's gonna be given to us or read to us.
Okay.
Posted on the website.
Okay, so motion, approval of the agenda to go ahead and add, to post all reports and, um, presentations or documents read. Okay.
Nicole, that's just...
Okay.
Nicole's second. Does she keep her?
We're just gonna add it to where it says approval of the agenda, where it's already motion and seconded.
Okay.
Because the motioner is Priscilla.
Yeah, but then she won't go. Doesn't she have to?
Oh, Nicole, is that?
Okay.
Good with you two?
Yeah.
Okay. Both motioner and, um, second approved to add that verbiage to the approval of the agenda.
Good.
Alright, under, um... All business? Or, well, actually, we only have one grazing official to do his report. To the... Do you have anything to say for your part?
A little, little one, please.
What? Uh, everything is gonna be posted up. Giga, we just had a meeting on that western agency. There, well, uh... The, the, what's that? A committee meeting on Wednesday? Sounds like that it's not gonna happen because we're gonna use that committee meeting. It's like, you know, for, uh, a meeting that we have to go over the resolution.
Okay, TBK 2023-254-001. Passes with 21 approval, zero opposed, five abstain. Number two.
TBK 2023-254-002, accepting and approving the monthly cash received deposits for August 2023 in the amount of $1,090.44, as budgeted.
Motion? Jamie? Nouristine? Second, Priscilla Benali. Questions, comments, concerns? That noise? Okay, no comments, questions or concerns? Asking for the vote, all those in favor, raise your hands. Opposed? Abstain. TBK 2023-254-002, passes with 21 approval, zero opposed, five abstain. TBK, oh, number three.
TBK 2023-254-003, approving and adopting the Napi Kinn chapter FY24. Budget of the general funds, fixed cost general funds, 12.5 million general funds, general funds to land claims trust funds and special revenue funds in the amount of $288,439 as budgeted according to the attachments.
Motion?
This is the new budget for next year.
Yeah, this is the budget for this coming fiscal year. Priscilla?
Yeah.
Uh, Sosi?
Oh.
And you? Second, Priscilla Benali. Questions, comments, concerns? This budget you will be able to see once it's posted up in the WIND system. And again, this is for fiscal year 24. Yeah, fiscal year 24, which will start with October 1st. Questions, comments, concerns?
Well, except that was the divided into the section for where first one go?
Yeah. Okay, any other questions? At then? All right, I'll go ahead and ask for the vote. All those in favor, raise your hands. It's never enough. Opposed? Abstain. TBK 2023-254-003, passes with 21 approval, zero opposed, five abstain. Number four.
TBK 2023-254-004, approving and supporting the budget transfer $245.84 from Fund 016722 Financial Assistant Funerals to Fund 016999, other miscellaneous expenses to cover the shortfalls to date that were not anticipated.
Motion? Priscilla? Benali? Second? Ella? Ella May Chi. We're voting on a resolution for the newcomer. Okay, questions, comments, concerns? At then, oh, hey, yeah, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, raise your hands.
Eighteen.
Jamie, Priscilla?
Nineteen, twenty-one, twenty-one. Twenty-two, okay.
We had a question, but we already voted on.
Oh, what? It's just going from funeral assistance to cover miscellaneous. At the end of the year, budget year, there's always ones that go into negative because of things that come through, through the month. So what happens at the end of the budget year is the most likely we'll be doing some transfers to cover the negatives so that at the end of September, it'll all come to with zero balances or plus balances. A, B, G, that's what we use as a carryover budget into the next. You don't want to go into the next fiscal year of the budget with the negative. So that's the reason why we take what money we can within the same code. So other aid in that same code, it has different line items. So put the plus amount A G G in the line items can be used to cover the negative items. So that's what this is all about, the budget transfers. Opposed? And abstain? Okay, TBK 2023-254-004, passes with 22 approval, zero opposed, six abstain. Have a seat. Okay, number five.
Number five, TBK 2023-254-005, approving and supporting the budget transfer of $463.48 from Fund 016300, office supplies and fund, and from Fund 01-6615, bank service charges, to Fund 01-6620, gifts and awards to cover the shortfalls to date that were not anticipated.
Motion? Priscilla? Benali? Second? Second? Priscilla Sosi? Questions, comments, concerns?
But this is the same thing as 004, right?
Yeah. Yeah, different, yeah. Anything else? Okay, ask for approval. All those in favor, raise your hands.
Ten, eleven, twelve, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two. Twenty-two. Twenty-three. Twenty-three.
Twenty-three?
Yep.
Opposed? Okay, abstain. Number six.
What was the vote?
Oh, TBK 2023-254-005, passes with 23 approval, zero opposed, seven abstain. Number six.
Number six, TBK 2023-254-006, approving and supporting the budget transfer of $10,000 from 02-6114, pensions and expenses to Fund 02-6100, salaries and wages to cover the shortfalls to date that were not anticipated.
Motion? Priscilla? Sosi? Second, Priscilla Benali. Questions, comments, concerns? Call for the vote. All those in favor, raise your hands.
Eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, fifteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three.
Opposed? Abstain. TBK 2023-254-006, passes with 23 approval, zero opposed, seven abstain. Number seven.
Number seven, TBK 2023-254-007, accepting and supporting the student financial assistance to the eligible applicant in the amounts requested.
Motion, Ella? Ella May Chi? Second? Priscilla? Okay. Okay, Priscilla Benali, second. Questions, comments, concerns?
There's two applicants, I think.
I remember I told you guys about that, changing the requirement of the top form. They didn't stand on to that.
Okay. Nope, yeah. Okay. And if you're wondering about what she's talking about, on the top form of the student financial assistance, there's four and five. Number four is talking about providing a certificate of Indian blood slash Navajo ID. When you go to Windorot, you can, instead of having the paper form of the CIB, you can have a card that is looked at as the CIB too. So one of those forms of identification can be accepted. But number five says government ID or Navajo ID. That part of it is gonna probably be changed to Arizona, Arizona driver's license or slash identification card. So that, that, because we're not government officials or we don't work for the government, so we can't have a government ID yet. Because CIB, it, it, it's already written there for number four. That's what she's talking about. She noted that for us, so we're gonna go ahead and do a change on that part of it. Okay, um, no more questions, comments or concerns? Call for the vote. All those in favor, raise your hands.
Nine, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, fifteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-two. Twenty-two. Twenty-two.
Opposed? Abstain. TBK 2023-254-007, passes with 22 approval, zero opposed, eight abstain. Number eight.
Right, is TBK 2023-254-008, approving and supporting the Napi Kinn chapter's new information technology services with the, with Navo technology service due to customer service costs, effective and reliable services.
Motion?
I'm, I saw my hand up, so I can have the one, the one that's changed, right? And then, um, eight, nine, ten, and anything that, that doesn't do with money. As she does, so, so, that, that, that.
Okay.
I'm motion for that.
So eight, nine and ten? Which is what, what I said, anything that doesn't have to do with monetary, A, it can be put together. But if it has monetary value to it, A, it has to be individual. We have to do individually. So the motion is to combine Resolution Number Eight, Resolution Number Nine, Resolution Number Ten. Is that correct?
The more recording you got, you're gonna explain each one of them.
Yeah, we'll, we'll read. But that's what it is, right? And thirteen? Twelve and thirteen?
Yeah.
So eight, nine, ten, twelve and thirteen. Let's read all those resolutions to you and then we'll take a motion. Are we? Let me motion that and second that first and then we'll read all the resolutions. So Jamie moves.
I'm going, going, motion. I'm reading, in my opinion, throw a motion on the one, three, four, five, trying to get it. A, that is already documented, but I want the people to understand what each one moves.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, we already read number eight. So number nine, ten.
Number nine, TBK 2023-254-009, accepting and supporting legislation 02, 02-23, an act relating to the, to the Law and Order Committee, Resource and Development Committee, Napi Kiyate Committee and the Nomination Council, amending Title 26 of the Nomination Code to allow for virtual attendance at chapter meetings. Number 10, an action to oppose legislation 139-23, an act relating to the Health Education and Human Services Law and Order, Budget and Finance and Napi Kiyate Committees and the Nomination Council repealing, now repealing, nine Nomination Code, Section Two, Charlie of the Denim Marriage Act of 2005, the Uniformly Recognizing All Marriages Within the Nomination and Amending Other Provisions of, in Title Nine of the Nomination Code relating to marriages within the nomination. Number 12. Approve and support the 2024 and 2028 School Board Apportment Plan to have local representation and empowerment and urge the Health, the Health Education and Human Services Committee of the Navo, of the 25th Nomination Council to pass a legislation that has local representation and empowerment. Number 13, approve and support the need of all nomination fairs to be wheelchair accessible and compliant with accessibility standards as outlined in the Americans with Disabilities Act and urge the nomination fair committees and fair host chapters and the Health Education and Human Services Committee of the 25th Nomination Council to pass legislation to appropriate funds for these improvements.
Not all.
Motion to combine all of them. Zero, zero, eight, zero, zero, nine, zero, ten, zero, twelve, zero, thirteen.
Yes, Priscilla is the second. Okay. Questions, comments, concerns on those? Any questions on any of those? Tashman, I don't get on any of the, is it five?
Yes.
Five resolutions?
I have a question on number 13.
Okay.
Are you, well, anyway, on all this new one, are you gonna read through the agenda on this part? The head on?
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, yeah, that will be in the minutes. How it stated will be in the minutes. So in the minutes, when you look at it, each one of these, they're gonna stay in their place but the motioner and the second will be the same on eight, nine, ten, twelve and thirteen. And the vote will be the same on those ones, okay? So no other questions? No other exclamation need, needed? Okay.
I'll call Raymond.
Huh?
Why does it ruin it?
Okay, I'll go ahead and call for the vote. All those in favor, raise your hands.
Nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-four.
Okay, opposed? Abstain. Okay. Ready? TBK 2023-254-008. Passes with 24 approval, zero opposed, six abstain. Okay, number 11.
Number 11, TBK 2023-254-0011, approving and supporting the budget transfer of $270 from 01-6300, office supplies to Fund 01-6306, computer software to cover the shortfalls to date that were not anticipated.
Motion? Priscilla? Benali? Second? Priscilla Sosi or Mary Ellis? Asayati? Which one?
Mary, Mary Ellis, yeah.
Mary Ellis McClear. Questions, comments, concerns?
Why, what's the difference between that and the other, uh, wise?
The other budget transfers? This one was added after the, so it ended up down here. Usually we have all the financials upfront, but this one, Nikki, it came in late, so the budget transfer after looking at the budgets.
So it's just continue from the?
Oh, it's just a continuation from the other budget transfers, but it just came in late not to be on the agenda, so we just added it, just like the rest of them. Any other questions? Comments? Concerns? One, what? One, five? Okay, call for the vote. All those in favor, raise your hands.
Eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, fifteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-two, twenty-three, 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 twenty-four.
Opposed? Abstain. TBK 2023-254-011, passes with 24 approval, zero opposed, six abstain. Okay. Twenty-four approval?
No.
Zero opposed? Six abstain. Okay. You have? Okay, so that concludes our resolutions. And when are we getting to? My stomach keeps, uh, uh, uh. Okay, now we, me, I don't really have a, um, just can start done with the end of the year, end of the fiscal year. Hey, hey, we have things to finish up and work on before the fiscal year ends. So, um, but starting at October 11, we're gonna start. We're gonna start. We're gonna start um, into the new year with new things to do. That's all I have. Any other report?
These are chapters president.
Question. Um, I saw the resolution, um, I was wondering if since it was through the past, I had a, I was wondering if we can share the petition on, you guys can Facebook. If that's possible to get some more signatures about the program to support the lead up of the background from the nomination to give her the help of the community. The resolution, should I give?
Okay, um.
Was wondering if um, so there's a link that one of um, my friends made and I was wondering if we can post that to the Facebook so we can get more signatures.
Oh, yeah, I guess.
But I mean, I was just wondering.
Yeah.
If it helps more to, you know, spread the awareness.
Okay. So, the resolution number thirteen, the uh, there um, there is a link that you can go to 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 say, yes, I agree that we need this accessibility. Um, we'll probably share on Facebook.
The link is, for the start, the link, I agree to link ending the document that we had this meeting linkeded to um, TBK website. We already approved that number one, because it has to be a decision, and that's part of her.
Yeah.
So I opened that right up, um, is that, maybe?
Yeah.
She has her face.
Yes.
On her face, okay.
Yeah. That is what it was at the beginning with the trouble of the agenda. So anything that needs to be leaked can go ahead and be done.
Um, everyone, I would ask Tommy about, I just started thinking, a request of vehicle for me.
Okay, um, the request for vehicle that um, we'll be working, um, working on the verbiage for that. Um. We don't really quite have the connections to Earl Dick, but we can, we can get in contact with them to see if we can do that. Um, we'll probably have um, LC and um, our council delegate work on that too. Uh, to see if we can request a vehicle for you. Yeah. Otto? Um. Senior Center City, Senior Citizen Center is missing Maisie. That's what I have to report. Where's Maisie? So, but no, I'm like, I don't know.
We're missing your delicious food. Little much heartache.
Yeah. So let her know you miss her. Head Start Jay, yeah, the children need to be uh, you only have eight registered so far, was it?
Right.
Five. So if you know of any Head Start age kids, three to five years old, send them to Virginia so that they can get registered for school. Eh, yeah, ah, gee, gee, um. They need, they, they need children because you're funded for how many? Fourteen students. If she's not fully registered with fourteen students, that that um, takes away from the Head Start for this Head Start right here. Um, because they'll start looking at cutting budget or they're gonna start looking at, oh, there's, there's not that many people, um, students there, so we'll take the center away from them. So that's the reason why. So let your, your children, your grandkids that you know of that are three to five years old register with Head Start so we can keep the center going. And we will find out.
They still need a teacher and a bus driver.
Teacher and a bus driver, Jana. That bus driver becomes a cook too, right? Double duty. So anybody who just wants to drive the kids and cook for them? Apply with Navo who Head Start. Teacher. We had um.
I know we need to take that sooner.
Yeah.
I think it's gonna be demolished, isn't it?
I think that's what they were saying, but.
They're gonna demolish it and rebuild a new um, school.
Yep. Well, we were promised a new building.
Yeah.
Before school starts, but we're already halfway into September. So we'll find out about that. Otto, Club C meeting is Friday. Correct?
Yeah.
Okay. And then um, announcements. St. Mary's Food Distribution on Monday, September twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three. We need volunteers. The.
We need volunteers at this time.
We need volunteers to help unpack the uh, packages and repackage for the community. Otto, eh, yeah, community candid to sell the cotton. So it's available to anybody that has an Arizona driver's license. So know that. It's, that's not chapter specific, so aid, aids Arizona residents with the driver's license or ID.
Do you sign up for it or?
Huh?
Do you sign up for a volunteer or this company volunteer?
Yeah, you, there's a volunteer um, form in the office over there, you sign that. And that will just keep a record of people who volunteer. Um, because if there's anything that we need done here, um, like in the plan, we're able to call those people and say, can you help us?
Billy, the email number, the records.
Okay. And then, so post it.
I can, yeah, I can post it.
Okay, so we do have an email from um, Billy Goodman Junior for Veterans Update. So we're gonna go ahead and post that to the website too. Shai, um, the um, what he really stressed too is that just to let you know the veteran organization know is that they do, do still have money in the veterans organization in the chapter. Yeah, so that eh eh. Okay. And then um, we don't observe Columbus State as a nation, but what they put in there as a observance is Indigenous Peoples' Day, October ninth. But eh, we're not gonna be closed, the office is open. That being. Otto, Halloween Day, Don't Don, October thirty-first. So upcoming scheduled meetings, planning meeting, Monday, October second, two thousand and twenty-three at ten AM. Um, the chapter meeting, Monday, September eleventh, which was today, at ten AM, but the next one is gonna be October ninth, two thousand and twenty-three. Our district raising meeting is Tuesday, September fifth, two thousand and twenty-three at one PM. Oh, yeah, that already happened, so it'll be October.
October tenth.
October tenth.
October eleventh, please.
And it's gonna be here.
Yeah.
TBK chapter. And then Western.
What's made?
Number four. So the next one will be October. The next one will be October sixteen?
Oh, yeah.
Agency.
Yeah.
October sixteen. Hermiti's meeting, eh, yeah, did you put that?
Eleven. Hermiti's meeting.
Eh, October eleventh.
October eleventh.
Western Agency Council meeting is this Saturday. And that's gonna be held at Coal Mine Chapter. Our next North Regional Council meeting will be held on Saturday, October seventh, at Nautisam Chapter. And Club C meeting is this Friday. Any other announcements?
Does Ross want to say that?
So what I'm gonna do before I ask for adjournment is I'm gonna go ahead and give uh, some, a little time to Ross Bergstresler. Just to give you what he was doing.
I appreciate the time. This room office, a couple of words about. Before the meeting, we had a nice little round table discussing issues, but it was brilliant, it was brilliant, it was a great time. And uh, I learned a lot. And I still do, I look forward a lot. And also, I hope we at the next meeting here, we have a lot of work.
I have soda in the refrigerator. There's soda in the refrigerator. Oh, yeah.
You're welcome. I don't, I'll put it as far as the chapter meeting is going, but um, we do have food for you. Um. We try to feed our people every chapter meeting. So you can tell them that. Tell the other voters to come to chapter meetings because we get fed. So. Motion to adjourn? Yes?
Motion to adjourn.
Second? Priscilla Sossi. All those in favor for adjournment, raise your hands. Oppose? Abstain. Motion to adjourn passes with twenty-four approval, zero opposed, six abstain. We are adjourned at two forty-six. They love savings time. Please do not leave without your food.
Thank you, Ms. Willie and Swat Canyon for attending. You guys have a good day.